Good day, everyone. Sort of an unusual daytime meeting. We do come out before dark sometimes. Welcome to the May 4th meeting of the Pumpin Board of Selectment. So, we'll just very briefly go over the ground rules. I think there's some people that haven't been in our meetings. But lately, we have been trying to do several things. One is practice that slightly paradoxical phrase, patient urgency. We try to be time-conscious and speak to the point, so we don't use up too much time. We do have the parking lot for issues that may come up, but may not be able to get full attention to on today, and if so, we won't lose it for next time. We have worked at lowering the volume of the conversation, making Town Hall and Town House as civil a place to do business as possible. And we do as best we can, try to bring along, while fully recognizing the seriousness of the work we do, try to bring along some joy and laughter along the way. So, as has been our custom of late, we'll have just a moment or two of silence, for whatever purpose, whether to just gather our thoughts, or enjoy a few moments without noise, or maybe a few moments to just be grateful for the opportunity we have to do this work. So again, welcome, everyone. So, the main agenda item tonight will be preparation for the annual town meeting, and we have department heads here, and town council here, and town moderator here, and we're thrilled you guys are all here, and thrilled to get through this. After we get through that part of the meeting, which will be the main part of the meeting, we do have a few other agenda items that the Board of Selectment will work on, that others may want to leave at that point. And then, when we are done with our open meeting stuff, we do have an executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation that'll end our meeting. So, any other agenda items beyond what we have published that anyone wants considered? Okay. So, I honestly don't remember how we did this last year. I think probably Town Moderator more or less directs the conversation, is that...
Yeah, we'll just walk through the articles one by one.
Okay.
See if we're all on the same page. One of the things I'd like to do as we go is identify who's going to be the speaker for each article. We're pressed for that. So, we'll start with the special. On some of these, it doesn't show where the money's coming from.
Is there another set of copies of the article of the county meeting warrant? I don't have it. I gave her another one to hand, I'm sorry.
I actually have an extra copy, because I printed out some, so why don't you have that? I think, in the warrant that FinCom sent out, there's a... Is there a chart of where the money's coming from?
I think if you look at the motions that have been handed out today, it identifies the source.
The motions I did, the motions I did identify where every source is. I just haven't had the ability to... I gave you all the motions, but I haven't checked Town Council's wording on them. I hope no person's a little different than mine and mine.
And there is this chart in the warrant that was sent out.
Yeah, there is. There is the back page of the budget is where that was, and John doesn't count that.
Do you want... Shall I give mine to you, John?
I can go make 'em one.
I can go print the copy. Could I get a copy of the two? Hello. Hi, Bill. Paul's gonna make copies.
I think maybe she needs this, so let me just run after her and...
Well, she's got a copy in the office.
She does?
That's what she went after.
Gosh, mine's in here.
Okay, so Article 1 is going to come from Budget Line 800.
It's reserved. I was looking for the whole warrant, but I just... No. I mean, that's the chair.
So, we're in agreement about that.
Okay.
Who's gonna talk to that?
I'll put John in. Accessors.
Next one is Article 20, $20,000.
That's also reserved on.
Okay. And who should I look to for that?
Me.
From the Board of Selectment?
No.
Are you gonna talk?
It says Board of Selectment. Oh, it does? Okay.
I'd like to take that.
Who would be the speaker?
I think Colleen wanted that one.
It doesn't matter to me, the Board of Selectmen can do it.
Okay.
Article 2 on the special.
You're gonna make this motion.
I can say, you know, this is the article, etc. What I'm looking for is somebody to explain what's going on.
Oh, okay.
Colleen or I can do that if we need to.
Yeah, I think that's your best bet on any of those financial articles.
Article 3, the $10,000?
Also reserved on.
Okay, and should I look to you?
Well, I can't make a motion, remember, I'm not a retired...
No, I mean, as the speaker, once the motion's made.
Yeah, if necessary, I'll be happy to.
We still didn't change that wording, yeah.
What's that?
It's not for a retiring officer.
No, it's... If you have, you might have the copy that Alana gave you, the FinCom copy is changed.
Oh, I didn't have that when I did these, so I will change.
So, what will it say?
Well, it says retiring... The words changed to retiring personnel, rather than... I'll give you a fresh copy of the warrant, or email you the... It's available on the website, anyway, but we made that small change.
Okay. What do you think it says?
So, John, so far, you're knowing who's making the motion, and who's speaking to each of these?
Well, I assume on the motion, it's whoever is written here, so the Board of Selectmen in that case.
Okay. So, on Article 2 and Article 3, one of us need to make the motion.
So, I'm gonna look to, unless you want to designate somebody now.
Why don't we get that done? Are either of you willing to make the motions, motion on Article 2 and 3?
Yeah, I mean, all you have to do is basically read this.
Yeah.
And that's how it is.
Actually, John reads it, and you just say...
Well, Alana's got the wording right below it.
So, he announces the article, and then someone else then hears it.
In the past, I've read a lot of the articles, and I think I should just pull back a little, because they're all written, the people are there with them, and it'll save us a little time. So, I would look to you to say, "I move the town vote to transfer from the reserve on $20,000, $20,000 on that."
You can do that.
Okay, so Colleen's got two, and John has three.
I've got three, okay. Article 1. $10,000 for the Winnetoxer Street game?
Reserve, also, all of these, except for six.
Okay.
Reserve.
Would you like to speak to... Who would like to make the motion for six?
I'll make the motion for four.
You want Jim to make the motion?
That'd be best if he's there, yeah.
If we need clarification, John, Jim, you might speak to him.
Sure.
All right, the Veterans Benefit Transfer, the annual town meeting, that's going to be reserved, too?
No. Article 5?
I'm sorry?
Article 5 is not reserved. Article 5 is $5,000 from the Veterans Benefits Line, and $5,000 from group insurance to be added to the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Article. It's two budget sources, and it's in from the Board of Selectmen. Because it's your article that we're putting money into.
So, that, it's exactly as written?
Yes. Well, I'm using my motion, I haven't had a chance to go back and forth with Alana.
But where Alana says as written, I'll just say, I can say that, so I'll read that out.
Yeah, it's the same.
Run me through that one, from beginning and end. We're at Article 5.
Yep.
You say...
I would entertain a motion that town moved to approve Article 5 as written in the warrant.
And then...
And you say, "so moved."
So moved, and...
And then we need a second, and we're...
And so, these words, all these words, "I move the vote to transfer," are not read?
Doesn't have to be, because it's as written. If we change any word in the article, then we'll have to read it.
Okay.
And everybody sitting there has a copy list. And in the past, on cable TV, I've noticed, which is really great, they show the articles before we move to that. I think that's a great idea.
So, that's really the case with all of these? We don't have to read any of them?
No, you do, because some of them, for instance, Article 4.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay. It is a little different for me. If one word changes, we gotta read it.
It's frequently the case when we prepare a law that we don't know what the sources are going to be, so it's a question of permission, which is permanent.
All right, so, do we need to say who's going to say "so moved"? That'll be me on this one. And if someone has to speak to this...
I can or Dale?
Why don't you plan...
Yes, I will.
One of you two plan on speaking to it?
All right. That's fine.
Article 6. Now, it's as written, so I can just say that?
You can't use it as written, because there's no sum of money in it as written, and there has to be a source. And, you know, it has to have a sum in it. I'm sorry.
So, we need to...
Do we know what that sum is yet? Do we know?
I have no idea.
We may not need it, but we're trying to do that, just in case.
Yeah, if we get to pass over, then we can do that, but at this point in time, I know what's available in the budget line, but I don't know if they've committed any of that amount currently. There's about $7,500 left in it right now, but I don't know if any of that's committed and needs to be paid before they transfer.
So, you'll have that wrapped up by town meeting with the amendments?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Trust me, I will. And I will change the other match Alana's suggestions.
Once we know the amendments, if we do do Article 6, Colleen, can I look to you to make the motion?
To read it, no?
And that wraps up special town meeting.
That's the special, aren't they?
On to the annual town meeting. Article 1 is to hear reports. Do you know of any reports that somebody might be... Can you commit use of that?
I do not. Colleen?
No.
No?
Okay, we'll probably agree right away. And then the side, I've asked the Boy Scouts at the beginning of the annual town meeting to have an honor guide pledge allegiance, and I believe they've accepted, so we'll do that quickly. They'll just come in, pledge allegiance, they'll go up. The other thing I've asked is, do we have two microphones from the cable company?
You'll have to contact them, I don't actually...
What I was going to do was have a Boy Scout at either side with a microphone. We'd still have the central one, and I would still ask people to use the central one, but anybody who's disabled or, you know, kind of easily moved, and the Boy Scout could go over and allow them to speak from this.
Do we have... We have our system?
We have. We have one portable mic here.
We have one, because we used it at the last special town meeting we had, and I thought it worked fairly well.
So, is it... In the past, it's been the cable that sets up the damage jam?
Oh, yeah, they send it all up.
Because the first time, I mean, the first time that system was out of the box was a couple of months ago, and we never used it in town meetings.
I will make sure we're up to speed on that.
Yeah, and if we only have one, we can work around that, but I just thought two might make it real quick. If there's new committees, Alana, do we have to do any of this? We just pass over?
Just pass over.
And if there is a committee that speaks, we still have to approve?
I think we have to accept.
Article 2, Town Treasure? On the annual, I think it's a special town meeting, we can kind of get through quickly, but I like to see the department heads, if they're the ones recommending it in the annual, the upfront speaking, so the people can see who... I'm not sure if anyone knows who everybody is.
Okay.
Article 3, the waiting personnel? Is that Dave? David?
Yeah.
Yep. So, back to the previous one. Say that again. You would like to see the department heads sitting in the first couple of rows?
No, 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 just that we started off with the annual town meeting, before we prayed for the special. I would like to see, as these come up, the people who are, you know, have, like, the Article 2 says Town Treasure, then that should be the person making the motion. And Colleen can just say, "I move the town to approve Article 2 as written in the warrant." But it gives everybody a chance to see, Colleen is Town Treasure, Jim O'Keehan is Highway.
That's what we usually do.
Yeah. So, I'm just reiterating what the past has been. Successes, we get through in one minute. Article 4. How can we read this, Alana, if this is a little different from you?
He would use the motion, provide it, I mean, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $31,500 to conduct Financial Audit for fiscal 2015.
No, he's doing four.
I'm doing four on the budget?
Oh, I jumped to five, sorry. Oh, I don't have four.
Well, that's the budget. That's the budget lines.
Oh, okay.
That's why there's no amount or anything in there from any source, because we have to go down and through the budget lines.
So, usually, on this one, I read this and then say...
And do the bottom line?
No.
Usually, we go, the custom is...
No, but at the end.
At the end.
At the end, there'll be a motion.
Okay.
Do the holds, go through it.
Go all the way to the end, and then read this with the correct due amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. I had four, I had four as compensation over the town sources.
So, we want to... Article 5?
Just make sure.
So, you'll make this motion, Colleen?
Yes, for five.
Article 6, so Jim O'Keehan.
Yeah, we don't have enough money on that one.
Do we have three revolving funds?
Yep, we used to.
What do we do away with?
The assessors, Matt, who was one.
Yeah, fortunate.
The DOR came in, they said it's not a problem, we're doing it, so it's fine.
If somebody has that, we can... Colleen, you make the motion?
Yeah, just accept as printed in the warrant anyway.
But now, there is a change in the tax title one, right?
Yes, and if someone asks if there's any changes, either Colleen or I can explain it. All we took out was the interest amounts that used to be, how it used to be credited here, and now it can no longer be according to DOR. It has to go to the general fund, so...
I mean, the point, I think, is that it's not a new one.
No, it's not. It's just an adjustment on the funds that were taken.
So, you're gonna have a little less money going into this potential?
Yes.
So, just a question, say Article 6, the Highway Surveyor, he's... Someone's gonna have to hand him this piece of paper to make the motion.
I already have given...
That's your department?
I'm already taking care of that.
Thank you so much.
Jim always has everybody prepared.
I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
No, Colleen has her motions, Jim has his, the police department have theirs, so we're all set.
Thank you.
So, Article 8 on assessors, I'll look again to... Now, Article 9 is the police chief, but he's not a registered voter, so Board of Selectmen, who would...
I'll...
You'll do it, Mike?
I'll make the motion.
And we'll have approved him at the beginning of the meeting to speak, so he can speak to it after you make the motion, if you've got a second.
So, for example, on that one, that reads the motion, we are not reading the whole article, or...
You just read, "I move that town vote to..."
To raise and appropriate. The motion I have says raise and appropriate the sum of...
$11,000.
$11,000, yeah, I just trimmed it, $11,000 to pay the first year annual lease payment for police patrol vehicle on a lease-to-own replacement program area.
Are we going... Is this... So, this is a new vehicle?
Yes.
Are we replacing the vehicle, or adding it?
As part of the regular rotation of police crews, it will, in effect, replace old...
So, something goes away?
Yes, something goes away. It's not an addition, it's just an ongoing expense.
Just in case something...
Yeah.
Article 10, Council on Nation, would that be Chris Moreno? Chris Moreno, will she be the one to make that motion?
Assuming she's there.
All right, I'll make sure she gets it.
Okay.
In effect, it's for her, though, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure she is gonna take it, but it's for her.
It's for the position, so if that comes up, even though she's made the motion, she can talk to you.
She's here, actually, in her own seat.
Okay.
I want us to ask before she leaves.
Okay, I'll make sure we... Assuming she feels comfortable making it, and she may not.
I'm sure she will.
Well, she... This was her...
Okay. Article 11, Fire Chief, now he is a resident, right?
Yes.
So, he can make the motion. And this first response, that's not a new vehicle, it's just, it's called first response.
Yeah, this is the last payment of Tricia O'Leary.
Article 12, Board of Selectmen, transfer. The amount is...
$99.028. Yeah, the current rate of amount is $99.028. To retire the debt on the town bond in the school road, subject to change.
Well, that, this is FinCom's. So, then, a question comes up, based on our, I guess, this act that we have, right, is the same as a charter?
Yes.
And the question is, based on that, can any changes be made from the fourth?
What year was this?
We'll say it was 2012. Does that sound right?
2012 or 13.
The first year that was effective was the fourth.
It is like a charter, so it is two-thirds.
Oh, I know it's a two-thirds vote, but the question here is, the act does not allow town meeting to act on spending out of capital stabilization unless it is recommended by the FinCom and the...
Will we have that? Do you have that all right?
We do for their number, but I get the feeling there may be people trying to amend it.
Okay, then I would recommend that they post a meeting for each board that needs to recommend it, or town meeting, so that if there is a change, they can vote on it.
But if they don't?
Then there's a problem.
Then the article can't go through, right?
Well, this is...
Well, that amount can't.
The question goes back to Denmark. Every time I get into it, he thinks that should have been a constitutional attorney, but can...
We're taking up a fund, actually, everyone, we're sending it to law school.
Can the Finance Committee, Select Fund, Capital Committee, they can prevent town meeting from making...
If they don't make this recommendation, as required under the act, yes.
So, the act...
The act takes precedence. As you say, it's like a charter. In other words, the general law, under the general laws, it would only have a majority vote, but because of this special act, it would be two-thirds, and it would be on the recommendations, it's only upon a positive recommendation.
It's interesting that the Selectmen, unilaterally, can prevent town meeting from spending out of that capital stabilization account.
That's the way it was set up?
I know, but it's...
Town vote?
That's a constitutional question.
Right, if you have, if you have a provision that says, "Well, there shall be a recommendation," that is determined to be only preparatory, it's not mandatory, it's discretionary, but if it says "only upon a positive recommendation," meaning, you know, the town meeting can't act about it, then you've got a clearer command, and I would say that would control it, so you should get the recommendation, of whatever the amount is. It'll be really important to post meetings for the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Improvement Committee, or town meeting, in case there's an amendment, then they can huddle, have their meeting, and vote on it.
Well, the chances are, I won't make, you know, based on this, I won't make a motion, so...
I'm not sure I understand.
It was me that was gonna challenge it, because the FinCom and I have a little disagreement on how to spend this money, but...
So, you were going to move to amend the article, or amend the motion, but now you're not going to?
Well, they won't, they won't approve it.
I don't think FinCom has seen the change as a whole.
But what I'm suggesting is that out of, because you might not be the only one, out of an abundance of caution, I would have each of those three committees post a meeting with the town clerk, you know, for the night of town meeting, so that if there is a need for them to meet, and have, you know, to give their recommendation with regards to opposing amendment, they'll be ready to do it.
So, we already have... Well, we may, were we our specific?
Were we...
What you can do is have a meeting scheduled, posted for 7:00 PM when town meeting begins, subject to the call of the chair of the respective committee during town meeting.
Can you repeat that, Alana, subject to what?
So, what they can do is they can, they can meet at 7:00. Does town meeting start at 7:00 or 7:15? They make it at probably 6:55, and then they can meet, you open their meeting, and then immediately adjourn, subject to recall of the chair.
I just have a quick question. I thought that there was a provision for town meetings where they, for open meeting law, that they were not required... law, that they were not required to post.
Yeah, they should post.
Okay.
They should post.
Okay.
I have a question. If the board of selectmen have to vote first, I don't know if all committees, but the way we originally worded it, I thought was board of selectmen and finance committee and capital. If the board of selectmen votes two to one, does it have to be unanimous by the board?
No, no, just the recommendation.
So if the recommendation is two to one, it can go forward to the finance committee to the capital?
Well, what's, the number that they're using now has already been through all that.
The ninety-nine has already been, the ninety-nine oh twenty-eight has been through all three committees in voting.
Has the recommendation reached?
Yes.
Okay.
So who's gonna make the main motion, come and go?
It'd be the FinCom.
The board of selectmen have the article in here.
I'm glad to make that motion.
We have that our party.
Now, so are there particular words you want on the notice of meeting for the three boards? You said open at six fifty-five, or?
Right.
Do we need?
I can email it.
Yes, I can email it. Yep, and then I'll do the, I'll just do them have the chairman sign it.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you.
So we'll make the, Mark, give the motion with the ninety-nine oh twenty-eight, and then, John, if you feel you want an amendment, we'll do that on the floor after we get the second, and we'll just go over it from there.
And then.
I just have a question. Let's say the amendment is made to a, to some number. How do the boards, do the boards still have to vote again?
Yes. I would, I would recommend that you, you know, take a recess of, you know, five, ten minutes and assemble, and then they can do what they need to do, give them the opportunity to.
And if any board turns it down, then the amendment doesn't carry?
Then you don't have the recommendation that you need under the special act.
But do we have, does it then go back to the main motion, which has been approved, to go onto the floor?
Well, if it's, if it's amended so that that's the number, but you don't have the recommendation, then the vote is annulity, but it doesn't necessarily go back to the original one. There should be, because if you've amended it to a new number, but you don't have the recommendation, someone else should get up and say, well, I recommend that the number be this, and go back to the original number, so that it's clear.
But it would be just a proposed amendment. The town can't vote on it until, you know, it's a portion of the car, isn't it?
Well, you could do it that way. You could say, Jim, we have a motion to do a new number that hasn't been voted on yet. You could do the recess, then come back, either with or without the recommendations, then indicate to people that it can't go forward, and, you know.
But if the amendment fails, why isn't the main motion still in play?
Well, it would be if you haven't actually voted it, because if you rule it out of order because there isn't the recommendation, then you would be back to the main motion.
I think we're agreeing.
I think we're agreeing.
So who's gonna speak to this? I'm glad to make the motion. Am I speaking? This one's too hot for me.
We can make the motion, but we can have finance committee make it.
Finance speaks to it?
Finance or I will, because I know what, what the amount represents.
And then John will make, if there's amendment, you'll make the amendment.
I'm not gonna put you on the spot. Maybe you're still thinking about it. Are you thinking of making an amendment, or?
Yeah, and what I, you haven't seen the latest version. I've done a simplified, which.
You've simplified something?
Yeah. Which we gain, or we reduce the tax increase by a percent, and it's much simpler than what the last one.
So you're considering moving forward with that?
Well, I'm gonna, you know, Barbara, I think, has talked to Susan, right? And your, your feeling is they will at least look at it, or?
I don't know what they're gonna do. I haven't, I sent her another email this morning when I came in and went through and had the correct figures to verify what you were doing, and I sent her another email. I have not heard back from her on that. Her original was, we voted what we had to, and we may not change it, so. But there is merit to what you're trying to do and get the tax rate down where you're trying to get it. So whether they'll look at that or not, I.
Absent this change, the tax rate increase will be over five percent, correct?
Yeah. Almost six, I believe.
So, actually, just to be clear then, if you are thinking of making that amendment, the first of the groups to vote would be selectmen, right? And if so, I just, if something's brewing, the more information you get to us way ahead of time, I don't wanna have to, you know, at eight, ten, try to digest complicated stuff. Come on.
And actually, I think maybe the time should be a little earlier on the posting. Maybe if you posted it six forty-five, so you could work it out, because some of what John's suggesting is not gonna, cannot wait until Article twelve. Part of it is putting money in the budget process, which you have to agree.
Once we're done here, can you, can you stay and we'll?
I'll stay as long as you need.
We'll cover it in the rest of this meeting.
And maybe one, maybe six thirty, just in case.
Well, we originally posted at six, right?
Yeah, we will post at six for anything else that might come up. Look, I, I mean, on the big level, maybe this isn't the forum for this discussion right yet. I mean, I think there's that sense that some of this is a really good idea. It's just none of us have had time to digest it, you know? I mean, even at six o'clock at night, you know, the night of, there are a billion questions.
Well, we'll go over it now, and you can, you can.
And it'll make it very simple, because if John's proposal is agreed to by FinCom, this'll be a simple passover. You won't have to do anything with it. It'll be handled within the budget process and holding lines and funding and that.
Alana, can you just give me the wording, though?
Sure.
So, I don't mix the words up.
Well, for this one?
Well, if we pass over, that's clear, but I mean.
No, this is, this is to do it if we need to, if it doesn't get.
Right. I was thinking more about if there's an amendment on the floor, how we structure the main motion versus the amendment.
Yep.
Article thirteen, the fire chief again.
I'll make sure he has a copy. And, and am I correct in saying that anything from capital has to be a two-thirds vote at the town meeting also? Alana?
Is this coming from capital?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. I often do, when I see transfer, I think of jury vote, of course. There's a specific funding source that requires two-thirds.
There are several in the packet. In my motions, I put that thing, but they are two-thirds votes, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Article fourteen, Marissa will be your assessor?
Yep.
This is pretty much what we do every year.
Yes, totally housekeeping.
Article fifteen. So is Moreno on board to make this motion?
I think it probably should come from us, shouldn't it?
Is this, this is the first payment of how many?
Second.
Second payment?
Of three, I believe.
No.
Four.
A hundred and, yeah, exactly, yes.
All right, so she should be on board at least for minutes. The discussion took place on the first one, so now we're just moving on to do it.
And if not, I'm glad to make it.
And that's a majority. Article sixteen is Jim's.
And that's another capital, so that's another two-thirds vote.
Article seventeen?
That's capital also.
Who's gonna talk to that? Who's gonna make the motion?
Colleen.
Yeah, who's going to? We, they approved the twenty-five thousand. Who's, who's going to make the decision? How does that work in terms of, who does the oversight consulting in terms of what the twenty-five thousand is gonna give us back? Board of selection.
Well, there's a, there's a committee, although I'm not sure it's been formally.
No, I.
It is the board of selection.
Yeah, I can only comment as an interested observer on this one, but, yeah, it seems like it should be the board of.
So, but if that question comes up, what do you, Colleen, and John?
Yeah, should, should consider formalizing it.
I would think so.
Article eighteen.
This one raises some issues, because of course, the creation of the stabilization requires the majority vote of the majority of the members of the, of the regional districts, so it creates a bit of a question when you have a precision. Certainly, you can go ahead and do it, but it raises a question as to whether the majority members.
Nobody else has passed it.
Well, I mean, you do what you do, and then, and then we wait and see what the effects is.
So if we pass this, and Kingston and Halifax turn it down, excuse me, hold, what would happen? It'd just be you?
Halifax has turned it down once, now I don't know, is it, do you know if they've managed to get?
I have no idea.
Their meeting is the Monday before us.
Tonight?
Next one. Guess we'll just wait and see what happens.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll do whatever happens, right?
So, can I look to you, though, to just say, you know, we're doing this, Halifax has already voted, whatever they voted, and the implication will be either we rescinded it, or it just goes away because they turned it down, or something like that?
Well, hopefully, Kingston and Halifax will both turn it down.
So if they both turn it down, do we still do this article?
We're right to do it. Transfer, when you're making the statement, but with the legal effect, it's going to be out there, it's a testament to the town leaders to do it, to do it.
But we know for the Kingston, is the meeting before or after that?
Yeah, I, I don't know. It's, we voted before that last shenanigan that was. And Halifax, even before that, had rejected it. So I don't think Halifax, if it's even on their warrant, they probably won't approve it. And I don't think Kingston will either, because they were pretty upset, so.
Is that a majority vote?
And Susan Ossoff, I think, will speak to this, too, because she's pretty.
Article nineteen, is it been discussed again, assessors?
We haven't seen anything on that, so I don't think so. Do you have the documentation for the board's review?
No, I'll, I've got a follow-up today. The town council is going back and forth with the lawyers, but.
Board's meeting tonight, so it seems like it's being.
So. If, if we haven't seen it, can I, would you, John, to say pass over?
I.
Do we still vote?
We, yeah, we don't wanna pass over this.
Okay, so who's gonna speak to it? Who's gonna make the motion? Who's gonna?
I will.
When you thought we, after town council was there, we voted to last settled the board's number?
Yeah, I, I'll at least get a draft of where it is today, even if we don't have the finished project.
Article twenty. So we're switching from by unit to quartal?
Yes.
You're gonna make the motion, Colleen?
Yes.
And you're gonna talk to White?
Yes.
Article twenty-one.
She stepped out, but.
I looked at Tara, but.
Yeah, I think that's recent.
Article twenty-two, I'm sure, community action council?
Article twenty-two was dropped. It's dropped. They voted to drop Article twenty-two. You have the.
Okay, so it won't be in the final?
Right. It doesn't appear in the final one.
Back to Article twenty-one, is that, that's just a majority, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we may need to be careful, because I think our numbering is gonna be different than yours.
So.
Current Article twenty-two is the sale of land.
So this, I have twenty-three and twenty-four, which is, you know, twenty-two and twenty-three, but it says placeholders. Do we have those now?
Yeah.
I just have some, Kingston had their town meeting on the eleventh, and it's been of April, and it's been adjourned to June second. They haven't voted on a lot of the financials.
So you won't now, you'll just do it. So what I'm gonna do is just, I'm gonna redo, based upon these numbers, get the quantum of vote in, send it to the moderator, and to Barbara, to you, to Dale, so that it ends up, yeah, so that you have. So it won't be confusion with the numbering.
Okay, so I think I'm on Article twenty-three, which is the solar, the zoning?
No, twenty-two is, is land.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had to call twenty-two. So I assume you got straight, Colleen and John, you're talking. Will you give us any wording on this one?
On which one?
Twenty-two, the. Say a little.
I have it, and I will. What about the, what about the taping of the meetings by law? Do we have it? What numbers are you?
It's a draw.
So, so the next one's twenty-three, the solar.
That's out. That's, that's dropped as well.
Which one, twenty-three is dropped?
No, 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 no.
Talking about the old one. You need to be working.
It was open.
You need to be working on the current, the one that went to the voters.
That's what I had, that's why I said I'm open, it's so long, the solar one.
They voted to drop that in the recent meeting.
So who is the state solar bylaw reviewer?
I chaired it. Several people on it. My understanding is that this actually should be put forth by planning. Bylaws are, come through planning.
They have to speak to it after the motion's made. They have, they have to say, we've reviewed it, and either they agree, don't agree, right?
So I can make that motion, yes.
So you can make.
We talked about adding, the selectmen, you talked about adding to the motion, and to exempt any project that holds a special permit as of, maybe, sort of date, actually, May one, twenty-fifteen, whatever date you think is appropriate.
Did that change get made in the?
Sorry, I didn't hear what the change was.
To exempt any holder of a special permit by a specific date. I understand there's a special permit out there now.
I mean, we can certainly add that to the motion, but, but it would, wouldn't it legally by default exempt them because they're grandfathered under the old rule? You know, once it's not, you can't do ex post facto, that's against the law, so.
Is the special permit issued? Is it physically issued?
I believe it is, yeah.
As long as the special permit is issued, then yes, under forty-eight six, paragraph one, they would have an exemption. But when we talked about this, I think it was two months or so ago, I don't think we were a hundred percent clear, but they've actually issued yet, and then the appearance done and so on.
We'll add the language to the warrant, I mean, the, to the motion, just to be on the safe side. I think that's the prudent thing to do. Good idea.
So will you get anything?
It's right.
Just what it says here.
It's in there, but there will be a new one that will come out with the right numbering, so it won't be.
So you're going to make the motion. Are, are you going to speak to it as chair then of the solar bylaw review committee?
You've got 12 pages.
Yeah.
People will not agree. So somebody's going to take it succinctly, why are we doing this?
Why does the change?
Yeah, we, we've already got a solar bylaw in place, right?
Okay. Yes, and we've amended it.
So you've amended it with 12 pages, so how do we shrink that down to what, what is the main things? Because somebody's going to say, is somebody pulling a fast one?
Yeah, I did speak with planning and I, I'm pretty sure that they're the ones that are preparing to speak to it, but I will confirm with that and.
Do you know the law?
I think it's Dominique, but I'm not positive because Dominique was on both committees. She's on solar bylaw and.
Just have to make sure that when they say they're going to speak to it, that they're just going to say, we've reviewed it and, you know, we approved. If that's all they say, it still leaves the elephant in the room. What are we doing?
Why the changes?
So will you check the.
I'll be looking to you, Colleen, unless Dominique's, which was.
So Alana, did you think that you did, the language is in there, that you wanted to do the exempt, it's already written in here as a warrant?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just thinking ahead to what he said over to the attorney general.
Now, that's deserves, right?
And, and just for the record, we didn't write all 12 pages. We took what was there and just flushed it out a little, so. We didn't write 12 pages.
Interested to hear. Article 24, the cable, Mike, I assume you'll be making the motion and talking for this?
With pleasure.
And this is a majority two? Is this a majority one?
Yes, yes.
The previous one, the solar, would that be two thirds because it is a zoning?
Yes, it's a zoning, yeah.
And Colleen, has that meeting been held where it was recommended to the selectmen from your committee to town? For your recommendation to the?
Have you talked about the planning board or?
Yeah.
Has the planning board met and held a public hearing?
We did have a public hearing, yes, or the planning board had a public hearing.
It was the joint, yeah.
No one attended.
Yeah, they voted approval and had a public hearing. All, all of those ducks are in a row.
So it'll have just a, I, I recall, I think it was last year where there was not someone from the planning board and I think you had to give the report last year. If there is a report, that you're just a one sentence recommendation.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can speak to it if, if no one is there from the planning board or no one wants to speak to it, it's.
We should have the planning board, so just say.
Well, yeah, I mean, rightfully so. They should stand up and say, yes, we passed it, we approved it, uh, we, you know, as it, as it's written and that's really all they have to say.
What they really should do is stand up and say, on such and such a date, the planning board met at a duly posted and advertised public hearing, held a public hearing and then voted by a quantum of whatever it is to recommend a town meeting that it, that it adopt these changes.
See if we can get that one. If not, I'll, I'll give it to for them.
Article 25, uh, this one will be passed. Okay.
Did we do it?
And that last article, or is that? Stabilization, stabilization, you pass over?
It's passed over.
Go back to, uh. What is now, is it 25? We, we did, in this one here, we had two articles to do with this.
The cable, because we gave you choices.
No, just turn it to one.
So you're not doing another one that was.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I, I'm not working from the one that was issued. You've got the final word in.
Yes, I, I, I have the motion which includes really the info in those two articles.
So you're only doing 24.
Uh, yes.
I used the 47427717 that you sent out in an email. That's what I used.
Okay, because there's probably not going to hit that number. Steve's coming next Tuesday.
It's going to be lower than that? So the tax rate's going up. That's what I told her, that the vision hadn't come in, but that if we made that one change, that would be it. So that wasn't a number to, to hang anybody's hat on. No, no, no. We, we knew that was subject to change, but that was the only thing I had other than the current value, which is even higher to use, so that's, that was what we used. You know, that's all we had at the time, so, and even Marilyn said in the meeting, it was subject to change.
So I'm sorry, Alice, the first part of that, what is changing? Something on revenue is changing?
No, the valuation of the town.
Is changing.
The total valuation of the town. I was providing preliminary numbers and Marilyn and I had a conversation that, you know, this is something that I'm asking you consultants to look at and in a conversation in the meeting, um, he and I said, he's coming, this comes Tuesday to begin our certification, which typically doesn't occur until August, but I haven't met early because, you know, we need those numbers. He said that that wouldn't be the first thing he looks at, so that's why I, because I said to Marilyn, this is, you know, she knew it was very preliminary. And I don't want anybody to hang their hat on that number because I don't.
But the assessors have to give us a number for town meeting, one way or the other, whether it's.
Right, well, the lower number, but this is something that we're considering and normally you wouldn't have this, this new number until August or September. So they wanted this much.
Right now, we've got to have a number.
Right, and I, I wanted to make sure she didn't, they didn't hang their hat on the highest number I gave them. That's all. Because I did say it was.
Why is there more than one number?
I only have one. The only one I was given, given in the email was the one I.
Right, but you said the earlier number you had that, that I gave.
I, I have the earlier one that had the overlay amount and whatnot in it and then the one with the valuation, that's the only one I have. I don't have an early. John, you had an earlier valuation number, but I had emailed to you in six days.
And you, you've got the lower number.
When she's using the higher number.
I, I, that's the number I have. I'll go back and find me, if there's another one, I'll just see if I can.
Why, just, well, we got everybody here. Why is there more than one number?
When Marilyn and I last met, I told her, you know, she was asking me, did I have all the new growth and I'd already provided that number to her. And I said, you know, there are a couple of other things I'm looking at and one of them, you know, she asked me if I could provide her a number.
No, I understand that for planning purposes.
Right.
Why wouldn't it, tonight's meeting, assessors vote a number to give to the planning committee and to the selectmen? So we have one number we're all dealing with because it's going to be ugly on the floor if we have a tax rate going up five or more percent and we're still, we're still talking about what is the real valuation?
We won't have the real valuation.
No, but you've got to have a number that everybody circles around.
We can't. There's no way.
You have to. You've got, you've got to help the town.
We've never had a number going into town meeting.
You have had a number that somebody used to figure it out. It's been printed in the annual town meeting report, this evaluation. It might not be the end number you end up with in August, but somehow we need a number. We're all using the same one.
Well, this budget's put, put together on a number, hasn't it?
Well, this budget is put together on a levy limit number. That is not the valuation number. It's the levy limit that the town can deal with. And then the levy limit is divided by the total valuation when we do the recap to get an actual tax rate. And that's, it's done on a levy, not on a, not on a valuation.
The tax rate's always set based on that number in the fall, in the fall, right?
And that's the state approves the valuation in the fall.
The moderator is also right that you need to put a number in there so that you go forward with that.
Yeah, you can.
That will be based on the levy, that will be based on the levy limit.
Correct.
It's been based on the levy limit, but if we really think the valuation is going down and people are going to find the tax rate is going up because of it.
Well, the valuation isn't going down. It might not go up as much as I had given Marilyn, this is what I'm thinking about when he comes in. So it was, it was very preliminary. I'm thinking about it. He's not going to come in before town meeting. We won't have that information, John.
But it's going down.
That's what Marilyn was aware of. No, the first numbers that I sent out to John and Susan and Marilyn are numbers that it won't go below that.
So that's what we use?
But then, you know, she came and she said, can, what else can you do? What are you looking at? We had that what-if scenario and I said, this is what I'm looking at. And she said, can you give me a number by Monday, last Monday? And I, I gave her that number.
And that number went up.
I did say, you know, Steve, our consultant is coming in and this is, you know, just something that we've talked about. So she knows that, you know, it's just something that it looks like based on sales that something, you know, with the base rates and tables that might occur. There's no way I can, the board can vote on it. We haven't had the analysis done by our consultant. So that's why I think the, the number that Barbara just said, the range of increase.
There's a missing link here a little bit.
Is what it is.
Somehow, if the finance committee is going to put together a budget to bring to town meeting, that you people have reviewed and either bought into or you've elected where you're going to fight it. At least the valuation be, should be the same number that's in the budget until we get a real one. My concern is if we think it's changing now and we have different numbers floating among the committees where.
Well, Barbara just gave you a range of what the tax rate increase could be.
You can imagine how that's going to go on the floor at town meeting. When you say we've got a range of five to seven percent or whatever it is, when people are saying, why do we have any tax increase? I mean, it's, you all better be prepared. Anyways, that's my piece.
Well, I mean, this is, we've been through this before.
We have. That's, that's what I'm concerned.
Yeah, and the, what do we typically have in the warrant? We, we have the, what the town's value, that's actually shown in the warrant?
No, you've never had the town. It's, it has not, the value has never been in there. What's in the warrant is the forecast sheet that has the levy limit on it and that's what has always been published, the, the columnless sheet that has, um.
And that's not going to change?
That is not going to change.
So something that we typically.
But that's just the maximum amount that the state will allow the town to raise and appropriate. That is not going to change.
Without a vote, that's the two and a half.
Well, that's the two, that's, that's everything. That's the two and a half, the new growth, the cherry sheet, the local, s, local estimated receipts, the charges that come off of that, the, um.
Dead exclusions.
Mandates, the, mandates the town has, the debt exclusions and everything. That's bottom line. And then the final piece, when we do the recap in August, early September to get ready to do the bills, we'll have the valuation on it and that figure has never been published in the warrant. It's never been. So it's always been a flexible and we never get the new growth until that. So there are a lot of flexible figures on the forecast when it goes to town meeting or anything else that we have no control over.
Yeah, so I mean, I think this is.
Conservative, conservative.
This is standard operating procedure in every town.
We've never had any numbers.
But the valuation, if it goes down, it's going to affect the tax rate, right?
Absolutely. Overall valuation of the town is not going to go down.
I missed that.
Last year's valuation. The, the value of the town from last, for fiscal 15 to fiscal 16 is not going to be reduced.
And so is that the number we use?
That's one of the numbers.
So just, we've made some preliminary calculations on tax rate, right? And.
But the figure I have.
What's the difference in these numbers?
I don't know. I'd have to go and look at the exact tax rate versus what I used. Do you want me to run in the office and?
Well, I think we need to, need to know the answer here. I mean, I, I wouldn't think we would be talking a huge range.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I was just told that what I used is not.
Maybe I'm off base, but if the tax rate, the, what people are wanting, going to know, want to know is what is the tax rate increasing? Once we vote the budget, we voted it out.
Never say that, John. Never been able to give that answer at town meeting.
But at some point, you have to have an estimate of what you think it's going to be. You can't say, well, we can't tell you what the tax rate is. Sorry. Wait till you get your bill.
Well, what has been said is finance committee came to us and said, this is a budget and we think the tax rate increase will be five percent based on this budget. I mean, so we've heard that from the finance.
And my concern is that the tax rate changes because of a low valuation in the levy limit. Am I wrong in that?
It, it's, it's. The total valuation of the town is not going down from last year. The increase may not be as high as was projected, but I mean.
But that's true of anything, new growth, whatever. We still have to be.
I understand that, but it's always done in the fall and numbers are established, the tax rate is voted on and, and goes forward from there and then the tax bills are issued. You never really know that at town meeting because there are, there are just too many variables. You just have to be below the levy limit and you have to present a budget and that's what the FINCOM did was they presented their budget, which they do every year and they were in under the levy limit and so, and based on, you know, estimated tax revenue that's going to be coming in in the following year. But in, I've never seen a town meeting where anybody argues the tax rate.
But we talk about the, well, we do the budget. We said the budget went up two percent. Okay, dollar last year's issue. But what people really want to know is what's that going to transfer into in a tax rate? Because they know what their valuation.
Like, as Mark just said, it appears at this point that it will be in the area of five percent. You don't know anything any more definitely like that than, than that in many, so.
That's the way it was presented to us.
And that's essentially the way, if you were going to get into tax rate, that's what you do.
The assessors should, if they're giving you numbers, even if they're estimates, there should be one number, it should circulate in an email and they should own it.
It's not going to change from last year. They should use last year's number.
Exactly.
And anything over that will count the following, next year.
The problem we have is nobody raises their hand and says, I own the number. Assessors don't. We need to lock that down.
If the rate's going up.
And, and you know, this comes to the bigger issue that we hope to get to right after elections since we have the DOR report with a lot of things that should be done differently and we need to all sit down monthly.
Okay, I don't want to be the jitters, but.
Okay.
We.
Really?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. The email that I had received and it came through Sue Ossoff and it was from Deb, had a valuation of the town of 47427717 and I have it. You don't have to write that down. And now Deb's just saying that it won't be less than last year's valuation was in the town and that was 477978188. So the figure I was given is already lower than last year's, so the figure I have is safe enough. Right. If the valuation is higher, then the tax rate will be lower. So what I use to say.
And the budget is based on your lower number?
The percentage of increase is based on my lower number.
10 minutes of me.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't want to run off in the middle because I wasn't sure what, I couldn't remember what last year's levy was, to be honest, on this, John.
Okay.
And I didn't want to admit and open my mouth without knowing.
So that's five percent, did you?
It was based on 474.
Did we say something about joy and laughter at the beginning? Mr. Moderator?
I think I'm through what I wanted from the meeting. Thank you. I think I'm through what I wanted from the meeting. Thank you.
And I'll get that email from you tomorrow.
Anything else on town meeting prep before we lose some of our, you know, brainpower here? Thank you so much, Alana. Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Department of Commerce.
Yeah.
All right.
Any reason to expect a bigger-than-normal turnout?
Pardon?
Any reason to expect a bigger-than-normal turnout?
I am totally guessing, but my guess, depending on what happens in newspaper and the like, is this may be a small turnout.
Really?
I'm just not getting that much sense that people are that interested.
I didn't-
I may be dead wrong on that.
I don't even know what it is. Yeah, but-
Just wondering if we should set up an extra room?
That, that's-
How many do we have in May now, you know?
They told.
I think it's a minute and a half.
125 pounds.
I don't think we're gonna need another. No, we never have that high. I mean, the one that we had that was the highest was that.
It's 300.
300. We get, uh-
We usually get 100, 120.
I was gonna say 125.
Yeah.
I mean, the only time we needed that room was the park seat, which nothing is gonna bring people up like that.
I mean, this room, we have the 100 in here.
I'll talk to, yes, I will, I'll get that done. I'll make sure we have filming and microphones.
So they'll have, they'll, when we walk in, it'll be 70.
To the best of their and my ability, I am on top of that.
Have you spoken with Julie at the Denit?
Missing information.
No, but I mean, I'll send her.
They, I, they have the date. I've spoken with her. It's on the calendar, but no other-
Thank you for that. Do you want to go down?
Sure.
You may want to, like, turn it up.
Oh, you caught me taking a very deep breath.
Actually, I've got a version of crap for why we apply it.
Mr. Spencer.
The microphone catch that tone?
Probably.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Al. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day.
Thank you.
Do we have other business with you?
No, so you could ask if I would stay and explain.
Oh, oh, yeah. Thank you.
What have you got? I didn't bring, I didn't think I was gonna talk about this, so I didn't bring anything.
What have I got? I have your email.
But then you've got what you did with it since, right?
Oh, yeah. Do you want me to go make a couple of copies? It's all in writing.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see if there's anything else on, maybe we should just run through a couple of the other agenda items while we get that together. Any public safety buildings planning? Probably okay on. Solar ongoing projects?
Hopefully she goes back and lights a fire.
Okay. Town government vacancies, I think we've beat that up as nauseam at this point. Future Board of Select meetings. We are scheduled to meet next Monday night at 6:00 PM, and then the succeeding Monday night. That'll be the reorganizing meeting. We will post for town meeting night at 6:00 PM. We may or may not need an executive session somewhere in there, and we'll talk about that in the executive session today.
And do you wanna add the 13th, because we do have to post it?
Right. And we will do that. Okay. Dale has disappeared. Do you wanna deal with correspondence while we're, while we're with-
Just making the conversation.
Yeah.
Sure.
Ah, here he is. Okay, so listen back to that, sorry. Go so long.
Okay.
Now, um, so we know that Barr has this information. Has FinCom seen any of this yet?
Um, FinCom has only seen what Susan and I have talked back and forth through emails over the weekend, because I didn't get this until just as I was leaving Friday.
Yeah.
And I tried to let Susan know that John had an extra option. And then I told her I would play with it over the weekend, but unfortunately I didn't have the exact figures at home. So I did go through it thoroughly this morning, and I did send Susan back another email this morning, but I had yet to hear back from her when we started this meeting. And do you want me to do it, John? Or do you, okay. What John was trying to accomplish with this was getting the tax rate down under 5% if we could. And it amounts to a few changes. One of the changes would be to take that 99028 that we have, coming out of a capital article that I think it's Article 12, and not doing that. What his suggestion was to, a portion of that is $23,206. That's the current payment on the town bond and school roof. And their State House notes, they were very, very low-cost borrowing. It's like 0.75%. So what John's suggestion was originally line, I think it's 815, I may not be exactly right on, yeah, 815, to put that $23,206 back into the budget process and raise and appropriate it, rather than take it from capital. And in doing that, what John would like to do would be to take the Silver Lake debt exclusion of 176, 576, and take that from the capital. And by doing that, overall, it changes what's on the budget sheets by the $23,000, because we have to add that back. So I took what's on the bottom of the budget column, the 9, 9,753, and I added that back for a new budget figure. And then I put the amounts in that would be used on the articles, less than 99, to come with a total expended amount. And then the next figure on there is the available revenue, which the forecast that everybody has seen right now is 9,910,398, but that has the 176,576 in it. That's the Silver Lake debt exclusion. If we pay that from capital, that is removed from there. So then the new amount becomes 9,733,822, and it would be 276,038 over the levy limit. But that's, that's just from every source. Then we would be using the 146,991 for the articles that we had all discussed and voted on before from capital. That excludes the 99. That's the fire trucks, the 25,000, the hot box, and those things of the 146. Then the Denit debt exclusion line of 82,294, and the Silver Lake debt exclusion line of 176. So that would take us under the levy by a total of 119,823. However, by taking the Silver Lake exclusion out of there, it takes the levy down at 8,550,114, less the 119 where under the levy limit, brings the new levy to 8,430,290. And what I took was that figure divided by the figure that I had received from the assessors of the 4, 474 zillion dollars. And it came to a tax rate of $17.78 for 4.9% increase over the current 1695. And as I said before, that was the only figure I had, so that's what I used. It is all subject to change. We don't have a formal cherry sheet figure yet, our local estimated receipts. We don't have a formal new growth figure from the assessors yet. So there would be charges, but, and changes in the whole thing. And I know that's a lot of information with a lot here, but it would bring it down lower. If we go with the original plan that the Finance Committee had in using the 99028 and not using the Silver Lake, the tax increase would be 5.8% for 1794 versus 1778. It's a few cents. It's not a lot, but it's a little more help for the taxpayers.
So if we do it the way that is on the table now, fully recognizing that we're dealing with estimates, but as it stands now, we're looking at 5.8% increase.
As it stands right now, with everything that's been voted, yes.
Yes. If we went with this plan as described, we think we're looking at 4.9%.
Correct.
So we're saving almost a percent.
Correct.
So I guess my question to you and John, is there a downside to this proposal?
The only thing is it takes the Silver Lake and the Denit debt both off the capital exclusion. No, I don't see a downside to it. The only thing that FinCom had mentioned more than once in the meetings that I've attended with them is they were trying to get the town bond and school roof off the books because they've been there for a long time. And they're afraid, I believe, that more work might need to be done, like on the school roof in the future, and we'd be still paying this one off. That was the only thing that I've heard.
Then, just a couple of words around that. So basically, we're taking money from capital stabilization that could be used to lower the tax rate, and instead, we're paying off debt early that only costs us 0.75% interest.
In the old way.
Mm-hmm. But we need FinCom to go along with this, and that, too.
Yeah.
I would think that we would wanna have that information prior to town meeting, because if they're not gonna go along with it.
Oh, if they're not gonna go along with it, we wouldn't even do it.
Right.
And the easy way to handle this and to accomplish it at town meeting, it's not a, a difficult process. When lines, line 850 comes up on the floor, the 74,000, we could simply hold that and add the 23,206 back to that line and raise and appropriate that amount of money. And then the offset to that would be to hold the Denit school line, which I believe is 755. I'm not 100% sure of the line numbers without looking at them, and simply transfer that one from capital stabilization or capital purpose fund right through the budget process, right then and there. And then that other article that we're gonna use, the 99, simply pass over it. That would be the mechanism by which to handle this proposal. So it isn't difficult. It's not a lot of shuffling, but it's something we need to know so the proper motions and holds can be put on the line to do it in the right way.
And is it then conceivable that we pay off the roof in the town building next year?
Anything's conceivable next year, depending on what happens with everything else that might come up in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
But you weigh in each year, because it's only cost you 0.75.
Right.
We're only talking about $23,000. We could simply pay the principal and interest, which would be a little lower again next year, because the interest goes down yearly.
Yeah, yeah.
The focus of what to pay off next year should be the Denit debt exclusion in total, because of the 4.75% interest cost.
Yeah. That's the bigger one. That's, that's the 500.
I mean, I sort of understand their worry. It's just kind of cleaning house before, you know, the next-
Oh, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
If you weren't facing a 6% tax increase.
Right, right.
Well, I, the only thing I'll say is, I mean, it sounds wonderful. It's really late in the process. I'm not sure how FinCom is gonna feel. And frankly, I'd love to have some input from the expertise of FinCom as well before I make my decision on this. And I don't know if they're meeting again. I don't know how all those logistics will go. I mean, it's just the last-minute piece and-
What I'm gonna do, I think, to protect any of us or anybody that has to do a motion, the motions are made in what I've given everybody for the 99 being paid off this year. I think I will do a second set of motions for just those few items that will change, and then we'll have it all ready to go either way, if that's all right with the board.
Could you do this, could you try, see if you can meet with Susan and see if she will call a meeting or not?
I'm glad we called.
And then if she says no meeting, then?
Yeah.
And then we could, we could have it on the agenda next Monday.
Yeah.
If, if they act.
Yeah.
They might not meet until next Monday. I don't know. I don't, because they'd have to call a special one this week, and I don't know if they have time or availability.
Yeah, that's-
I don't think they're coming in tonight, to be honest. But I will double-check. I will see if it's posted, and I will talk to them. But I will have a double set of motions that's only, it's only paid. But it will be prepared if it goes.
Okay, so we'll be on the agenda next Monday. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. Dale, would you like to give a town coordinator report? You may have given it in the form of the town warrant.
It's usually what happens in the process. Actually, that was the, the, pretty much the events of the previous week, and we'll pull back. The special remediation, that begins this Thursday in the Treasurer's Office.
This Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday. And that is a process that'll happen overnight. It'll be done. And then after that, the company, the vendor, will come back in, repair the room, repair the damage to the room, new carpeting. Color's been picked out for that. And that's where that stands. It shouldn't take too long, I don't think. You know, maybe a couple of weeks. And the only other thing I would say is that, and I think there's sort of a consensus of opinion, at least among the Treasurer's Office, that they kinda like their new digs with some modifications. They might, you know, just as soon stay there. So then the board would need to consider a possible divider for that room to create two, or one large, or two smaller meeting rooms out of the old Treasurer's Office that could be used by various committees. It's actually more versatile solution rather than the one room that they, we've had available. Again, that's entirely up to the Board of Selectmen, but as a recommendation, I would think it would be a good thing to do, but your call.
And the moderations to that room would involve electricity or having some outlets?
No, we'd have a, there's a, there's a copy machine for general use in there, and there would be one of those portable, not portable, room dividers where you just sort of-
I thought you said that there needed to be moderations in the old Selectmen's room.
Um, well, file cabinets would have to get moved over, and maybe they might wanna configure it differently. The accountant would take my office. I would take the accountant's office across the hall. And that's pretty much it, not any-
I was told they don't have enough electrical outlets in there.
If that's the case, we could certainly address that. I mean, you know, again, as part of the thing, but that may be the case with several desks.
So you're suggesting at this point the board needs to be pondering whether it's one room or two room, if we make the change?
Right. And because there's a little additional expense involved, obviously buying the divider and probably some electrical work in the current, in the current Treasurer's Office. But it does give you the addition of one good size, I mean, even with that room divided in half, there's two pretty good, good-sized meeting rooms there. And with it open, it's a, it's a large room. It's bigger than the, the old Selectmen's meeting room.
And we would have, we have funds somewhere for these expenses.
Yeah, building and grounds maintenance. We could do it.
So I just emphasize, we have not, as far as I know, made a decision on whether they are moving over or not.
Yeah, right. Right. I was just saying that. I think that's a good idea. They don't have a problem with it, you know? They seem to think it's pretty good. I mean, we move some shelving, put some of their file cabinets in. Even the safe that's in the Treasurer's Office, that will come across the hall. in the treasurer's office, that will come across the hall. And, and, you know, and there's certainly enough room. There would be probably an addition of a Dutch doors, you know, for public, public traffic. And, and then you'd gain the two rooms across the hall, which, you know, which with, you know, varied committees, a lot of times we have committees that like to meet. You know, everybody wants to meet on a Monday, and there's no room for them to meet on a Monday, plus, you know, a lot of the, not all of the committees, but I mean, some of them that are utilizing, Concom comes to mind, they're utilizing that room downstairs. That's a, really not a good room, and they, so they've been using the up, upper room, and I'm sure they would like to, you know, they could move up there as well.
So I think it's something we have to think about, but I just want to be absolutely clear that we haven't made any decisions yet on whether this temporary relocation is going to be permanent or not.
Okay. That's my report.
Very good. Correspondence.
Now, this is an invitation to each member of the Board of Selectmen to attend the installation of the new minister at the 15 Congregational Church. This is some background information from the animal control officer, so that the selectman can start beginning, thinking about his contract renewal.
A year from now, right?
It says contract renewal 2016, but don't we renew it in May of 2015?
Yeah.
So not a year from now.
Didn't we already renew? All right, I'll have to look into that.
It looks like...
I think that was additional information that you needed from him.
Oh, okay. So we didn't renew it last May, we renewed it more recently? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
All right, so this is additional information. This is the financial, financial balance sheet from Comcast Cable Communications.
They make any money last year?
It's up to all of us. Halifax Puntin Express. This is from the State of Massachusetts Animal Response Team. There's been a law passed that we have to arrange for an emergency management plan for, to include animals, temporary shelter, co-locations, shelter, or something of that nature. So would this go to our animal control officer then?
And could actually, is there only the hard copy on that? Could you get a copy to me as well? I'd be interested in reading that. Thank you.
Did it go to the, to like Warren and Police Chief, the, the Safety Committee?
Has it already been copied to them? It does not say.
See, they're the ones that include it.
So you want to copy it everywhere?
Scan it and email it to anybody on the list, and everybody.
And this is also from, I thought this is from Comcast, but, yes, it is. Again, advocating a free account review. That's it.
So we are up to open, or the minutes of the open meeting, which was 4:27.
I really don't have anything.
I have nothing as well.
Oh, my gosh.
Mazel tov!
And this week is my birthday, kidding? You guys knew that, right?
Very nice, well done. All right. Anything else for the open meeting? So I guess I would make a motion that we, I guess, do we adjourn the open meeting, or do we simply go into executive session and then adjourn them both after?
We've always done executive session with the intent of going back to opening meetings, so...
So we are going to go into executive session. At the end of executive session, we expect to adjourn both the open meeting and the executive session.
I leave for this, right, the executive?
Yeah. So thank you, everyone here. Thank you, everyone in the audience. We will be back next Monday night at the regular time. Good evening.